Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the January 21st adjourned council meeting minutes and the January 24th regular council meeting minutes. Any corrections, changes, comments? Not, not as meetings are previously submitted. Next item, report of the town manager, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mayor Boyg, members of council. Just a couple of administrative items. I will be away from the office on Wednesday through Friday this week to attend the Virginia Local Government Management Association Conference. D W Lawhorn will be handling administrative issues in my absence. And also, town offices will be closed on Monday, February 20th in observance of a state-recognized holiday.
All right. Any comments or questions of Mr. Warner? No? All right. Next item, appearances before council. We have two people signed up at this time. We'll just take those in order. Just if you would, please give us your name and your address. So the first person, Jane McKim.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Jane McKim. I live at 112 Pickland Court here in Bedford. I'm a former member of the Bedford Police Department under Chief Graham, and I'm fully aware of the facility needing a change, a big change, and I'm surprised it hasn't come sooner, as a matter of fact. The concern, I think, from people I've spoken to around town, the people that I know, is the cost. The cost that was in the press release. So I would just ask that the council and the township do due diligence to try to get that cost under control. And as an example, I wanted to present some information on another small town down Mississippi called Dilberville. They built a 14,000-square-foot facility, brand-new, completed it last year, 2022, for 4.5 million, top of the state-of-the-art, beautiful facility, has classrooms, walkers, reception, evidence from the whole nine yards. The population of Dilberville is 14,000, approximately twice as much as Bedford. So again, I just ask that the town council do their due diligence and try to keep these costs low, because if they don't, we're gonna have to pay, and it's gonna put a huge debt on the township and residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clayder, Tony Clayder.
Tony Clayder, I live at 4276 Big Island Highway in Bedford. I live in the county, but I've got a lot of property in the town. Couple things, good things. We finally got the trash picked up off Independence Downey. It looks nice, thank you. Finally working on some of the drainage issues. I seen that today. Glad we're working on it. But we have a lot of more infrastructure issues that this town needs to take care of. I know that you're expecting a big influx of money with this annexation, which I'm not for. I have property that's gonna be annexed into town, so I'm gonna have a 60% tax increase. So naturally, I'm not for that. But I know it's most likely gonna happen. The, as far as the police department goes, I know, I mean, they've been, they've been in the place for 20 years. Well, a few more years ain't worth nothing. My understanding is the town's gonna be pretty much out of debt hopefully by 2024. And what y'all need to start doing is, as far as I'm concerned, wait, see how this money is gonna come in, if you're gonna get the money you think you're gonna get, and ask my word. Try to fix the problems you already got first before you start another problem. You know, get the things done that need be done, that need be taken care of that has been passed over to, just like the police department. And start saving money. And then, let's see how good you are at saving money. You know, if you need $12 million to build a police department, which I think is outrageous. I mean, it don't have to be the Taj Mahal. It just need to be four walls and roof, whole eating hair, and maybe have a jail cell in it and a few rooms in it. So it don't have to be fancy. But I would like to see if y'all could save half the money before you proceeded to building anything. Then if you need to borrow the rest of it, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But I wanna see how y'all do with trying to save money, because it doesn't look like y'all been doing it very well. The, and the other thing is, at one time, I think when it was, Bedford was still a city, they was talking about using that piece of land on Orange Street, going down Orange Street towards Independence. They're on the left, that corner. Which as far as I'm concerned would be the ideal spot for the police department, lifesaving crew, and the new firehouse. It would all be there in one spot. You'd have plenty parking, plenty land to turn your trucks around, back them up into the firehouses like they need to be, where they're blocking up the road and creating a problem in the road. You can start with the police department. Once you got that paid for, then put your fire department and everything there. But choose the spot wisely, because if, my understanding is, if you're gonna do this, use your spot there at the bottom of the hill, you ain't doing them wasting money right there. Because you're not gonna get the square footage you need, parking and nothing else at that point. And actually, that parking lot serves about a purpose for the courthouse up here, is overrun when they have big court dates up there, because there's no parking around close by. But I, I'm all for advancement and having new things, but it seem like if things get done, just, you know, somebody gets a whim and they wanna do it, and then they're gonna spend money and then put the town in debt. I can't see it, don't understand it. So that's what I'd like to see y'all do. You know, get, when the money first starts coming in, get what you, the problems you already got, all of them fixed. Start saving money for the police department when you get half of it. Then let the people know that you got half of it, and you wanna go on and proceed with it. And this other thing, having to pay somebody $40,000 or $50,000 or whatever y'all paying to draw up plans or pursue something, you know, look like between all of y'all, y'all can sit down and put your heads together, come up with what you want to, too, and just get architect to draw plans up. You ain't gotta have somebody tell you, well, it's feasible or nothing else. I mean, to me, that's a waste of money when y'all do these studies. That's all it is. Big waste of money. Another thing you gotta think of, the first annexation that you did, have you provided trash pickup and services for all of those people that you took in at that point? I don't think so. And now you talk about doing these others. Of course, all of that included, what I would think, curving, guttering, sidewalks, streetlights, and all of that stuff, too. That's a small fortune right there. So if you do do this annexation, you gotta keep in mind, you gotta put all of the infrastructure in for, too. It's not something you can just kick down the road and do. I mean, if you expecting the taxpayers to pay you extra money, you need to use that money for the services you supposed to provide for them to start with. Now, like I said, I mean, this, police department is fine, but y'all need to rearrange your priorities and look at this thing and plan more ahead instead of just looking six months down the road. I mean, y'all already spent a fortune on a sidewalk growing a birch hill road up y'all. Far as I'm concerned, that's just totally unnecessary. I mean, that was money, total waste. And I'm waiting for the day that somebody's gonna get run over in that crosswalk you got up there. I, I, I just, I don't understand the reasoning for that. But anyway, somebody wanted it, so they got it. But, you know, y'all just need to pay more attention to what you're doing and think more ahead about what you're gonna do and budget yourself better than what you've been doing. And we also need to concentrate more on getting some kind of industry in here instead of these little antique shops. How much tax base they bringing you? How much all these nonprofits that keep opening up here and there and everywhere? How much tax base does that bring you? You know, I doubt it's very much at all of them. So y'all just need to be more cautious and think a little bit more about what you're doing, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clayder. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak tonight? No? All right, we'll close the public comment period and turn it over to council comments. Mr. Carson, I'll start, talk a few.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say, I would like to say that Saturday was a beautiful day. The parade, watching the soldiers come in and all of the people that turned up to show them love. Bedford really showed them love on Saturday, and it was a huge success. And I think everybody enjoyed it. I think the soldiers did. And you, you did a good job. But I, I just wanna let them know that they did a good job on Saturday, for these troops deserve that and more. But I'm glad that we was able to do that for them on Saturday.
I just wanna say, Saturday was a great event. Coming up, Mr. Carson. Mr. and Mrs. Parker put together a great event for our town. They remember our fallen heroes that was in this town many, many years ago. And it really brought together a lot of people that was, that's been through a lot in their lives about losing relatives and stuff like that. So it's been, it was a great event Saturday. And like I said, of course, Mayor done a fine job of speaking or whatever, so.
Leader of the pack. I could not be there Saturday, but I did hear, very great event, very good. And that's what Bedford's about. From D-Day Memorial, recognizing veterans and moving forward with it. That's what Bedford does. So again, a very good tribute, very good parade.
My only comment was similar. The presentation to the 114 National Guard group was wonderful, coming back from the Horn of Africa. Those folks have been away a year, and their, their work was, well, you know, we have to appreciate everything that they did. So I'll pass on.
All right. First of all, I wanna welcome everybody that came out tonight. Thank you for being here. On Saturday, I had something, another obligation I had to do, so I missed the parade. But anytime I see a man or woman in a uniform that's in military, in the military, I'm gonna go up and thank them. Not just on the day we have the parade, but all the time. Folks that serve in military, thank you for your service, for everything you do and have done for us. I cannot imagine where we would be without people like that. I also wanna thank Josh from Public Works today for helping me out earlier with the situation with my vehicle. Thank you.
I got a few things here. I don't think we've met since the fire occurred down on South Bridge Street at Sister Sister Cafe, and we'd be remiss if we didn't thank our fire department once again for responding in a professional manner. I mean, anybody you talked to said that fire could have been devastating to our downtown. And those guys, ladies and gentlemen, did an excellent job like they always do. And I just wanted to give them a shout-out. Obviously, the other departments that came and assisted them, from the police department to Public Works to Electric Department, you know, that was a team effort that day. And, you know, our citizens should be thankful for the, for the job y'all did that day. Another kind of piece of really good news, I think, that we've recently been told about, and this kind of deals with fire safety as well. So the town of Bedford has had its ISO rating reduced to three, or increased to three. I don't know how, which way it goes. But anyway, so what that means is, that's a, means we're providing a really good fire protection for the community. It's gonna help each and every homeowner business in town, probably with, hopefully with their insurance rates. So I mean, I think that's just some good news that we should pass on and let our citizens know about. While I'm on fire, I took the opportunity to, Chief Stone invited me down to the Fire Safety Training Building when they were having their, I guess it was their final exam for the firefighter one class, where they had their live-fire exercise. They didn't put a mask on me, and I didn't go in the building. But it was impressive to watch what they, the training that they are, they're getting down there. And if, at some point in the future, I think I would like maybe Bart to get with Chief Stone, and maybe we can set up a work session. If you haven't been down there, we all should go down there. I mean, and see. They've got a ton of stuff down there that they can train on. I think they've got some plans to do some other stuff. So I think if, when the weather warms up, it would probably be a good idea, maybe for us, to set up a work session before council meeting and just go down there and see that if, if we can, just to familiar, familiarize ourselves with it. Let's see here. Once again, like Saturday, it was a great event downtown. We had a wonderful turnout from the community to welcome home Company A from their recent deployment to Africa. Just wanna present this certificate to Mr. Warner here that was presented to the town from the 29th Infantry Division. Y'all read it real quick. It says 29th Infantry Division. This certificate of appreciation is presented to the town of Bedford in Bedford County in recognition of your constant and unwavering support. The 29th Infantry Division is forever grateful for your efforts and friendship. Your organization ensures the sacrifice of the citizen's soldier remains enshrined in American history. Signed, Major General John Rades, Commanding General, 29th Infantry Division.
We give that to you, Bart.
We will display the program.
Yes, thank you. Two other things real quickly. Recently, we've had two new businesses open here in town. The Homegrown Company Inc. had their grand opening down on the corner of Bridge and Main Street. Had, had a chance to visit that shop. It's a nice little retail establishment that's opened here. So if you haven't had a chance to visit it, I'd ask you to check, check in on them. I'm sure a whole lot of people have visited the other new business, Benny Soldato's, is that right? The new pizza place down at the 620. I think they sold the most pizzas in one day on their grand opening of any of their stores. So that was good to have those, those two new businesses in town. We welcome them. Finally, the last thing, I just wanna give, give a shout-out and thanks to Ms. Contrail, Chief Lewis, and Town Manager Warner. We had our first mayor's youth meeting last month, and a couple weeks ago, and they, they were there to talk to the 13 students from our Midone High School about their roles in, in town government. So our next one, I think, is gonna be February the 25th. We're gonna have, let's see, Mrs. Urkel's gonna be there to talk about community development and economic development. And we're gonna try to take a walk through downtown and visit the fire station and, and learn about the fire department. And we'll also, that day, be doing some brainstorming, seeing what kind of ideas they come up with on how we can improve our community. So if anybody's, it's like 10 to 12, if anybody wanted, wants to stop in on the 25th, warm welcome to come by. And that's all the comments I've got tonight. The next, report of council committees. We had a couple committees this evening.
We had the Streets Committee meeting this evening. We talked to Bill Mosey about some issues down on South Street. We talked about Alleyway renaming a street here in town. Also, we talked about, remind me.
About maybe a project with the schools on, down on the Center Town.
Talked about project, school, downtown at the Center Park, so.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And the Electric Committee met afterwards. Our main topic was storm cost recovery. As many of you know, December 23rd through 25th, we had a massive storm, ice, wind, cold temperatures, single digits, which normally creates hazards and a lot of work for utility workers. We, we discussed impact on the PJM market and the grid, impact on Bedford. We incurred perhaps a million, a million dollars in storm cost, costs. So after that, we proposed some storm cost recovery methods, which we'll discuss in future council meetings and move forward on.
That was all the council committees that's met since the last time. All right, so no revisions to the agenda, no changes to that. All right, so we'll move right into our new business. Mr. Warner, Financial Advisor Services contract.
On December 14th, 2022, a request for proposals was released to procure an on-call term contract for municipal financial advisor services. This proposal included financial advisor services for the proposed law enforcement building project and to be on-call for future advice and services, including for the Economic Development Authority and Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Contract term in the RFP was for a one-year period with the option to renew for four successive one-year periods. By the RFP's middle deadline of January 13, 2023, three competitive proposals were received. The Council Finance Committee was utilized as the selection committee for this RFP, which was asked to evaluate the proposals on six various factors at various rating methodologies. Based on the evaluation of proposals by the selection committee, the highest-ranked proposal was Davenport and Company LLC. A notice of intent to award was released on February 3rd, 2023, and is available on the town's website. Tonight, town council has requested to grant approval for the town manager to enter into a contract with Davenport and Company LLC for financial advisor services based on the issued RFP.
So do we have a motion to grant approval to enter into a contract with Davenport and Company for financial advisor services?
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So does this just enter into a financial proposal thing, or is this pushing the design part?
Actually, they're, they will be providing services related to analyzing the design of the police department building, but also other services such as capital planning and advice to the EDA and the Housing Redevelopment Authority on helping manage some of their accounts. It's not just the police department.
It's, you know, the way I look at it, it's, it's kind of for them to come in and give us an overview of where we stand financially. You know, look at our financials and, and give us advice, you know, help us to, you know, if we decide to move forward on the law enforcement, you know, obviously, that'll be a big piece of what they're gonna do. But it's, it's, you know, to save what we can, maybe can't, can't afford, you know, how, how we can structure our deal if we do move forward. I mean, so, yes, that's gonna be probably a big piece of it, but there is some other things we would like for them to look at. You know, how we finance capital over a longer period of time, you know, how we kind of structure our capital plan. Like, you've heard it tonight. You know, there's a ton of needs here that we've gotta balance, balance the limited resources with and, and, and kind of prioritize stuff, but, you know, with Ann's help, who's. help, who's been a tremendous asset already, and Davenport's help, I think we can make sure we're doing our due diligence on the stuff we're going to talk about later tonight and and other projects as we move forward, so.
Mayor, if I can speak for a second.
Certainly.
I can almost see Finance Director Cantrell jumping up and down over there. But one of the things that that she and I have been trying to do with contracts more for the town is to have people on term contracts where you have them pre-qualified at a predefined price and you have them for some number of years, typically under the code, it's three or four years. And if you never use them, you never pay them a penny. But that way, if you do need them, council doesn't have to wait for us to go spend 60 days doing an RFP. You pass a resolution and give us a directive to do something and we go out and get the contractor to do it. It also means that there are fewer emergency procurements, there are fewer situations where something maintenance-wise comes up and we have to just go scramble because we've already got somebody on a contract to do that maintenance at a defined price. We call them up, say, come in on Monday and do that thing you already have a contract with us to do. It's just a way to kind of make things smoother, and this is a contract to get Davenport on one of those term contracts. If you never think we need to do anything, we never pay them anything. But if we do something, then we have somebody who we can call and get service. I mean, I did want to remind you that you guys did ask us at your retreat to work this year on developing a long-term capital improvement program. So that's certainly something that staff has been looking at. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ann, would you like to make any comments on this?
The only thing I might add to what Mike said is we are not currently rated as an agency, so one of the things that Davenport will do is provide us a, if we were to be rated, what would that rate be? And I think that will be very beneficial to you all to see, are we single A, double A, where do we compare?
Right, okay, good.
Wouldn't this group be helpful in knowing, in order to do a big project, obviously, we need to know exactly whether or not, in fact, we can afford it. So, I mean, that's what I look at these people as, trying to break it down, knowing your rates make a big difference in what we pay long-term loans, so. Good idea.
And one of, as part of the Finance Committee, one of the comfort effects with Davenport is obviously our recent, you know, we've used them before. We just recently used them several years ago when we did our refinancing of all the electric debt, well, all of our debt, I believe we did. And they were excellent at, they have so many contacts in the financial world that was able to get us, I mean, we, I know we had probably six or seven proposals to choose from, so that that was a big comfort factor for me is the experience they've got and and their ability to work with them.
We have been very interested in lessening our debt before we do anything else, contrary to some popular belief that we do. Were they more of a flat rate or hourly? Most likely, you know? I couldn't remember from their proposal. I think they had different fee schedules.
It depends on what you want them to do.
And that's before we move forward, we'd obviously know, you know, what they'd be billing us.
Correct, and we did get a billing sheet typically for a bond issue, and I got it this morning. I haven't reviewed all the terms, but it's a fairly standard thing, and they incorporated the terms of our RFP. They usually, if they do a bond issue, they get paid out of the proceeds of the bond and they get paid a certain amount based upon their, basically how much work they've put in and how much risk they're taking on by giving us the advice. If it's more of a, give us advice on future capital needs so that the planning commission and council can make these plans, then there is an hourly time and materials rate.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Oh, now, I did call some of the people that are used for references for each of these companies, and out of the three, Davenport was the one I was most impressed with. They seemed like they would be the easiest to work with and that they were charged a more of a reasonable rate and more trustworthy.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, we've got a motion, a second roll call.
Mr. Carson.
All right.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mr. Showen.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries all members voting aye.
All right, next item is the presentation tonight from Wiley Wilson on the new police department facility.
I have some lengthy background information to provide for your benefit. On December 8th, 2020, Town Council approved a request for proposals to pursue conceptual drawings and construction cost estimates related to the possibility of constructing a new police department, a parking garage, and making renovations to the farmer's market. A building advisory committee appointed by then-mayor Steve Rush reviewed the proposals submitted in response to the RFP and recommended discussion with Wiley Wilson. On February 23rd, 2021, Randy Boggs of Wiley Wilson and John Judd of Desmond Associates presented information before council at its regular meeting. Council subsequently adopted a resolution formally designating the building advisory committee as the project advisory committee with the authority to interview and negotiate with candidate firms for the advertised RFP for needs assessments, cost assessments, and conceptual drawings, as well as administration of design-build construction of a proposed parking deck, police station, and/or farmer's market. After conducting interviews with firms regarding submissions for the RFP, the project advisory committee selected Wiley Wilson to proceed with the scope of work directed by the RFP. Council approved the selection of the project advisory committee at its regular meeting on April 13th, 2021. In light of the estimated costs of constructing a new police department facility, staff also evaluated alternatives that were anticipated to possibly be more economical and cost-efficient by comparison. To that end, staff visited commercial properties that were currently being marketed located at 191 West Main Street and 1106 Monroe Street. The property of 191 West Main Street was not deemed to be an acceptable alternative. However, the property at 1106 Monroe Street was identified as a possible alternative, and Town Council approved an option to purchase real property at a price of $950,000, which was valid for a period of 90 days at its regular meeting on January 25th, 2022. Preliminary analysis of the property at 1106 Monroe Street indicated estimated costs ranging from $7.9 million to $10.2 million to renovate it in a manner suitable for use by the police department in addition to the cost of purchasing the property. As a result of that information, consideration of the age of the building and the operational needs of the police department, council chose to let the option expire and pursue design of a new building and notified the seller of that decision on April 12th, 2022. At its regular meeting on April 26th, 2022, council affirmed its consensus regarding the inadequacy of the current physical offices and the need for a replacement to better accommodate the current and future operations of the town police department, and that after evaluating alternatives, it would be most economical, efficient, and effective to construct a new facility on town-owned property to meet that objective. Council approved construction of a new police department facility through a process including the following administrative steps. One, design of a new police building. Wiley Wilson is currently engaged under an existing contract to provide this service and have agreed to serve as the architectural and engineering firm of record for the project. Two, obtain the services of a municipal financial advisor. On February 3rd, staff published an intent to award this contract to Davenport and Company, and you just approved a retainer agreement with that firm. Three, obtain the services of bond counsel to assist with matters of certifying the validity of any debt that may be forthcoming. Christopher G. Culp, who has assisted the town in matters related to previous issues, was appointed to serve in this role for the project as well back on April 26th, 2022. Four, obtain appropriate financing for the project. This will be considered in conjunction with recommendations by the municipal financial advisor, Davenport and Company, referenced in point two. Five, prepare and advertise a bid package for construction of the new facility. This would presumably occur concurrently with a bond issue. At its regular meeting on July 26th, 2022, council approved proceeding with the recommendations of the original RFP in a design-to-build manner. Wiley Wilson presented a proposed contract including estimated costs for final design, schedule, and construction management. At that time, council requested changes to the proposed contract to include a review of the proposal at the 50% mark of design activities, which would also give council an opportunity to evaluate whether or not to proceed. At the regular meeting of Town Council on August 23rd, 2022, Wiley Wilson submitted a revised contract proposal for design services, which included an estimated cost of $10 million for the proposed new facility. Council approved the revised contract and appropriated up to $348,000 of funding from revenue provided from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, to cover expenditures related to the contracted activity. September 1, 2022, representatives of the town and Wiley Wilson executed the council, executed the contract approved by council at its regular meeting on August 23rd. Wiley Wilson has now notified the town that they have reached the 50% milestone referenced in that contract. Therefore, the matter is now being brought before council for further consideration. To date, Wiley Wilson has submitted invoices totaling $335,065 for services related to the contract activity, which means that they are currently within the $348,000 budget established for that purpose. Tonight, Town Council has requested to consider either approving or disapproving proceeding with the design of a new police department facility and appropriation of related funds under the terms of the contract executed with Wiley Wilson.
So at this time, do we have a presentation, I believe, from Wiley Wilson?
Yes. Hello again. Randy Ballin here with Wiley Wilson, and I'm a vice president and project manager. The project has been engaged with it from the very onset. With me tonight, I've got my senior design architect here, Britain, who springs, who has also been engaged with the project from the beginning. We don't have a real long elaborate presentation for you tonight, but we thought we'd start by just sort of reviewing where we are from the beginning, from a cost standpoint and a size standpoint, where we are right now and what we have done to get the the project for you that we have all set out to do. So I'll let Britain kind of go through that review real quick for us.
So last year, we performed a space need study on the existing building and had discussions with Chief Lewis and his department and going through the needs of what they currently have and projecting out several years to see, because the the population is bound to grow, especially if the annexation does happen, it's going to need more officers at some point. We determined that approximately 20,000 square feet of building met the needs currently and projected into the future, so they're not going to be moving into a building that's already too small for them. So after we developed that that need assessment, we knew the size of the building needed to be, we worked with the police department to develop a two-story building that is not only space efficient, but fit on a fairly tight site that the that the town already owns. Then we worked on the study phase cost estimate, which we call an opinion of projected costs. And we based this cost on the size of the building and we based it on a project that we just completed recently up in Orange County. That was a similar style building, it was a public safety building. It was a little larger, but we determined that it would be around 350 to 400 square feet, dollars per square foot of building and site. And based on this square foot cost, we estimated that it would be in the 9.2 to 10.6 million dollar range. And based on that, as Town Manager Warner said, the Town Council voted to move forward on that range, I believe, of 10 million. At the schematic design, we did a, another estimate. We projected 9.9 million, site and building included, but we did not have a very large, we didn't have a lot of information based on the design. We had walls in rooms based on, you know, that sort of stuff. So we use the same method of past projects to estimate going forward. And now that we were at the 50%, we engaged a professional cost estimator, someone who does this, you know, day in, day out in Virginia, and their estimate came in at 11.1 million. This was based on a lot more detailed information as we developed and progressed the design. Obviously, more information came out and they could provide more detailed numbers on that. And this is based on current market costs, not historic costs, so they are in tune with the current construction costs in and around this area and Virginia as a whole. And this estimate also includes escalation to a point, it's about the midpoint of construction. Once, so we then delivered that to you all, and after we delivered that to you, we actually went back and reviewed the cost estimate ourselves and found ways to try to get that closer, that number closer back to the 10 million that was originally, that was the original cost estimate or probable cost. And we've identified approximately three quarters of a million dollars in reductions to bring it back closer to 10.35 million. $350,000 in design changes, basically reduce it, changing out some materials for, you know, slightly more cost-effective materials, changing out cinder block walls for metal strip walls, things of that nature. There was approximately $270,000 in items that the estimator assumed were in the project, but we could strike them out knowing that they weren't in the project. Being at 50%, they are still, so including some assumptions that may be fleshed out further in design. And then $170,000 in items that were moved out to other budgets, like site lighting that may be provided by the electric company, thanks to that major. And then moving forward, if we were to move forward, there would also be a a cost estimate provided by that same professional estimator at the final drawing phase that will, you know, verify and confirm that we are staying within that budget. And it's kind of where we're at up to now.
That's really the presentation we have for you right now. We understand that, you know, the the cost of the building is slightly more than what had been considered last year when we get, go ahead. We're here to answer any questions that you all may have of us, and we're trying to get into a long presentation, trying to guess what you, what was on your mind, and just want to open up for any kind of questions.
Can I start?
I guess I'm, do you think material has stabilized or, I know it went up. My thinking, or what I'm hearing is that it's stabilized but starting to come down some. And and I know we talk recession, recession, but we're, I don't think it's as bad as people think, but I'm trying to get a crystal ball here. Look, around this time next year, do you think things will be materialized better? And would we reevaluate it then at a lower cost?
It seems that the the costs have stabilized a bit. I don't know about coming down. But I don't see them coming down measurably, if at all. But I don't see them coming down measurably, if at all. Even if it's, even if it's, I mean, you've seen inflation recently. I mean, even if the price is stabilized in terms of the raw material cost, the inflation, the cost could, you know, go up. So I just, I don't see it, I don't see the cost coming down. But, you know, again, no crystal ball, I don't.
Yeah, I'm not just, I guess I'm just really thinking out loud to a point and I know none of us do, but I'm just seeing. And it's better now than it was a year or so ago when things just lumber was skyrocketing. And it's stabilized to a point. It's, I'm not going to say it's cheap, but it's variable. So I'm just with all this, do you foresee us staying within budget?
At the point that we are right now, if we were to proceed on, which these projections do include escalations that you're seeing in the marketplace. So what the cost estimators are doing, or they are looking out and they're doing just like what contractors are doing. They're knowing that they're not going to be buying half of the products and material in this building, you know, sometime down the road. So they have to put some dollars in the contract to make sure that they can buy it and cost. So I feel a lot more confident in this number. The firm that we use, we've used them on several other projects and they do work for local governments all across the state. So I feel like they have their hand on the pulse of the construction market as best as anyone can at this point in time. So we feel like this estimate should stabilize or come down a little bit. We're working very much to look for ways to continue to economize on the building. But that's, you know, it's so hard to predict right now.
I know I'm putting you on the spot and I know nobody really knows, but at the same time, it's, it is what it is.
I will say on that Orange County project that we use them for, their estimate was spot on.
Okay.
All four or five bidders, I mean, were within right on that number. This one was like right middle.
Were they spot on at this stage, at the fifty percent stage?
Yes.
Not at the, so you're not seeing huge increases when you go from the fifty percent to the ninety percent and then from the ninety percent to the bid?
Correct.
You're not seeing right now much, because that's my concern is if we're at ten-three now, you know, we put it out, we get to the ninety percent, you know, and now we're at, you know, ten-seven or eleven, you know, and then we put it out to bid. And I mean, you know, we got it, we, you know, before we, if we decide to move ahead, before we decide to move ahead, I mean, we got to know what, we got to be really tight on what we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. So one of the, early on, you talked about, and just for us again and for the public, can you explain some of the factors that are driving costs in a law enforcement facility versus a typical type of commercial building? Some, you talked about earlier on some of the building code requirements, you know, and some of those things that kind of drive up that cost. Could you maybe just remind us of those factors again and just help explain those again? I think it was some.
Yeah, there's, well, the, it is a, considered an essential facility, which means that this facility should be operational if you have a natural disaster or, you know, another deratio comes through and knocks your electric grid off. This building would have a generator, a power generator to make sure that you can keep it up and running so that you've got, you can maintain your, you know, your law enforcement personnel. It is also going to act as your backup emergency communication center, which is an operations, excuse me, emergency operations center, which is your operations center should your harbor grid go down or any of those types of incidences. So it is by nature a more robust construction. It has to have more stringent structural requirements to it because it is a facility. So that's, that's some of what's driving it, but I think it's just the general cost of construction overall.
Just the economy, just the.
Building that we built, we keep referencing in Orange County. We finished that up in two thousand seven, or two thousand, last year, right?
Yeah.
It took a while, but it's two thousand. That was a thirty thousand square foot building and was built for a little over twelve million dollars.
And let me interject on your behalf, if I may, for the benefit of council. Does a ten point thirty-three, five million figure include all site costs?
It does include the site costs.
It includes site?
That is, that's the site cost, the building cost, and.
Contingency?
It has, it has a design contingency in there. Now, there's no contingency for moving, you know, if we were to hit rock or some other suitable unmovable condition on that site down there, which, you know, you don't know because you can't have, you don't have x-ray glasses, obviously. We've done the site geotechnical survey, but there are things that could occur during the construction activity that acts of nature, those types of things that might cause some additional costs to that. But that's, we don't have that contingency. What we have right now is a contingency in the cost estimate that is for things that hasn't been designed or detailed yet. So there is a five percent of this number here is for things that are, that they know typically will come up between now and the time that the hundred percent is falling. So there is that money in this number that hopefully we can continue to will away at and, you know, everything now even more.
And of course, that doesn't include the furniture picture.
It doesn't include the furniture, it doesn't include our, our, our Bs and any other type of soft costs that you might have related to financing the project or any of those kinds of things.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Okay, one is, now, obviously, I don't know if any of you have seen the current police station or not, but I'm wondering if part of that could not be possibly modified a little bit? Because I went through a little tour today to kind of look to see if there's any possibility. Now, I came up with a couple of ideas. Is there any way we could put a shower, install another bathroom in there to make it a little bit easier? I'm just thinking about ways to reduce cost.
The current facility is very much undersized for the size of the department. And adding those sorts of facilities would take up even more space than is already lacking.
All right. And obviously, it's going to cost between three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars per square feet. Now, there was a lady here earlier today, I'm trying to think of her name, but she was talking about a facility that they built for around, I think, five million, if I'm not mistaken. Is there any way we could figure out a way to maybe get it with the nap ballpark?
I think there was a half, there was a ten thousand square foot facility versus a.
It's actually fourteen.
Four, that was fourteen thousand, okay, fourteen thousand.
I looked, I looked it up.
Did you look it, okay.
Yes. There are many things that can affect costs, region of the country that it's built in, the timeframe when it was designed. If it was finished in construction last year, you know, you're looking at two, three years of construction, which is like right during COVID. So that, the pricing that was locked in or contracts were agreed to prior to COVID. And the design of the building probably started in two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen. So there are, there are many factors why that building is cheaper or, you know, could be, could affect the price and make it that a more cost-effective building or a cheaper price. But it, it, you know, really, it's the region, time, obviously. Money increases over time. And the, the region of the country, I don't know what their construction climate is like in Mississippi, but it's, could be much different than here and it could be a completely different structure. I don't know if they, I'm sorry.
It's hurricane-proof, they're all just north of Biloxi, Mississippi.
Okay. So yeah, not knowing, not knowing the ins and outs and the details of that building, I can't really speak to that, why that was, the price that it was, but.
That's why I was referring back to the Orange County building, which is a, one that is regional, that we have knowledge, firsthand knowledge of. As I said, that was a thirty thousand square foot building. It was built for twelve million dollars, including all the cycle. That's, and the building we are designing for you is a equal robustness of construction and that's where we're at now.
And similar materials.
And similar materials in construction. So that's just the, that building, we built for about three hundred and fifteen dollars a square foot, excluding the site work. The estimates that we're looking at now are more than five hundred dollars per square foot. And that's just how much the cost of the materials and construction that have increased in the last, we started that building in two thousand eighteen. So, you know, probably five years' time, that's how much the cost of construction have increased.
Yeah, I know Vienna just finished one and I'm not certain, I'm not sure what size it was. Theirs was fourteen million.
Labor costs down here, they are cheaper than northern Virginia.
Yeah, this is in Orange County though, so they're Charlottesville area. So it's a similar construction set. But again, the cost estimators are nowhere in the building is being located. So they kind of figured they're including those labor, labor fluctuations for region.
Have you guys, we've had issues with the water authority and hookup fees. Has that been priced in? It's been an issue.
We have, we have meetings with the water authority, with Mary, with, we have reviewed them. We've gotten their requirements. I don't know, we have, so we've included any kind of construction that we need to attach to that facility. I don't know what their tap fee is, if they have a tap fee for the town. So that is, would be part of another cost that is not in this.
Not part of this.
So I don't, I don't know what their tap fees are or what they could be.
It can be surprising.
Word's going to have to negotiate with them.
So I got two questions.
Yes, sir.
One, you know, you have to have a functional building, you have to have a secure building. I know our police offices need a new facility because of the space downstairs and stuff like that. But is there any more cuts that we could do on the building to make it more cost-efficient and have it a functional building? Like second floor, maybe gone or different architectural designs or non-architectural designs and stuff like that?
So we did, like I said, we did look at some of those things to try to get that number back down to the ten million. Working, we worked pretty closely with the department to, you know, to give them what they need. We didn't oversize the building. We did design in a little bit of room for growth for the, for the projections that we had for the growth of the department itself. But it's not anything grand here.
So what is, what was that number again for projection for?
Oh, shoot, I don't have that on me, I can't remember.
Thirty, thirty-five?
Yeah, I want to say it was over, over ten years. We had ten-year projections. I want to say we're at twenty-six, twenty-four officers now. And it was up to thirty, thirty to thirty-two, I think, is what we, is that correct? Somewhere, somewhere in that ballpark. So I mean, again, we're not, we're not projecting out twenty more officers. It is, you know, a handful.
Yeah, I don't want to put twenty-five officers in a crowded space even. So I mean, that's what we got going on downstairs as it is.
Right.
But I just want to make sure that we get the most cost-effective building and process down the road if we do go that direction.
Yes, sir. I think at this point that if, it would end up hurting the mission to reduce the square footage of the building. And I'm talking, you can nickel and diamonds, but that's not going to save a lot of money. Take a big chunk out of the building, it's going to hurt the machine.
So we've identified roughly six hundred thousand dollars, about eleven billion now, that we're able to, to tune it back, to get us back to that ten point three number that we're looking at now. That's a, you know, a fairly reasonable, you know, five or six percent reduction right there without changing the size of the building. And you say, all right, well, let's take another thousand square feet out of the building. It's a five hundred dollars per square foot. It's not quite linear like that. You can't just, you know, take that because it.
The jigsaw puzzle, at that point, you have to rearrange.
Get into a lot of reconfiguration. And it's not a linear, not a linear cost, square foot cost. So that's, again, where we're at with the materials that we're building are all intended to last, you know, a fifty-year building, just like the one we're sitting in right now, it's lasting fifty years. You could argue that it needs a little bit of work, but, you know, it's been built, it was built well. And I think that's what we're proposing to do for this facility as well.
And I think that's what the whole point of building this new facility as opposed to rehabbing another building was for the growth. That was the common, I mean, the officers that we have now, they need a new building. They deserve a new building. But we also need to know they're going to grow. We're trying to absorb this ten million dollar thing. We're going to absorb that. I just don't want no surprises after ninety percent mark. You come in and say, okay, well, we got to have another three or four million dollars. That's my concern, but it's no question about the fact that we need a police station. We need one that's going to fit the growth, that's the common. We need one that the officers are going to be able to perform their duties. They deserve it because while we are laying here sleeping or running around doing our business, they are protecting our backs. So, I mean, it is what it is. We always looking for a deal. So we're not going to stop coming at you about trying to cut the costs. We're not going to do that. But like you say, we can nickel and diamond, but we want an efficient building that's going to be there thirty, forty years from now.
So what's the timeframe from where you are now to get into that ninety, hundred percent design?
The original schedule was to have had the final drawings ready to go out to bid to contractors late March, early April.
Of this year?
Of this year, yes. So we've had some slowdown in that now. So we're about, that was predicated on moving right directly on from where we were at in December. So we had roughly six to eight weeks of, you know, stand down while you guys are deliberating this. And so as soon as we, you know, if you were to pursue, proceed on then, you know, we would be, I would say now, we're probably looking more like the May-June timeframe to put this out on the street for contractors to.
And then, so, and then bid process, how long, what do you think? I'm just, I'm just trying to think, you know, because like I said, you know, we, well, I'm just, a couple of years from now, we, our debt load is going to be substantially less. So I'm just trying to see how close we are. You know, just on the regular, your timeframe, where we're going to be compared to getting to that point, you know, is what I'm trying to figure. So we're out to May or, you said maybe now?
Yep. And then typically, it's, you know, six to, six weeks or so for bidding, a month and a half to bid. Then you've got to go through the award. So that's, that's another month to two months, so.
Three months.
Yeah, so, I mean, your contractors, nowadays, they don't, you know, they're real antsy about holding their bid prices for more than about ninety days. So you need to be able to at least say, yes, I want to award the contract to you. So I would say if you're talking, you know, late May, then probably August, September timeframe. And it would be advantageous to start construction in the fall before, you know, the weather turns on you so you can get site work done. So. So it, you know, all things were perfect and, you know, money was no issue and we'll just go ahead with it right now, so.
Construction period two years, 18 months, two years?
Eighteen months to two years. We will not have to pay for this.
And if we, obviously, you've been here for the, some of the discussion earlier tonight. So if we go and maybe talk to, you know, get our response from our financial advisor, you know, because I think that's kind of where we may be. I mean, do you think that's going to throw your numbers way out of whack if we take 60 days to kind of get, get with them, get some analysis done, see where we stand? I mean, would that substantially throw your numbers?
Just whatever, yeah, I mean, again, it depends on what the construction market does. If we think it's stabilized, so I would not anticipate that, you know, 60 days falls to cost, cost that much, but.
I mean, that's why we got the financial advisor, so.
Right, and that's why we put these brakes in this, you know, when we, when we were talking and negotiating this contract, you know, that was why we put these brakes in here, just so we're being prudent and taking, I mean, you know, I know we need, we definitely need it. I mean, there's no doubt about it. We 100% need a new police facility, you know, but we got to be able to afford it too and, you know, and.
Pay the bill at the end of the day.
Exactly. And so.
They don't want to repossess.
But anyway, so.
Lock us all up.
I mean, that's kind of where I am a little bit, this, let's, let's hear from Devonport kind of and see and then, but that's just, you know, I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but.
That's where I was.
Yeah, you know.
Nothing else.
Yes. So does anybody else have any other questions or any other information y'all want to share with us or the public?
Couple of things, obviously, the cost is definitely one of the biggest factors here because obviously the police, they do need and deserve a new station, facility, no question about that. But we also have to do it at a reasonable cost, which is what people have been asking about. So right now, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, so to speak, and personally, do we get more information on finance one way or the other? I don't know if it's really appropriate to really make a decision, yes or no vote tonight.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Can we move the table?
So, so we, we don't have a motion on the table, so does anybody want to enter?
I make a motion that we table this.
Second.
Until we.
Until we get more information on finance.
Okay. So we have a motion to table, table the decision on moving to 90% design until we've heard from our financial advisor.
Second.
We have a second, all right? Any further discussion on that?
That's fine, Mike.
It is.
Take this one.
Okay. All right.
And then we need to put a sit to 90 day grace period in there because you were talking about 60 days.
I don't know, this maybe is a question for, for Ann. Do you have any feel for how long Devonport would need to kind of?
In, in the negotiation process, we made them aware of this was coming. In fact, I'll be transmitting information to them tomorrow.
Okay.
30, 60 days is probably good rule of thumb.
All right, let's make that our goal, at least within 60 days. Kind of, we don't have to put that, I don't think, as far as maybe that's our goal, is to get back from that, hear back from them and, and. All right. So it's, any other discussion, any other questions?
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardwick.
Aye.
Mr. Joe Hansen.
Aye.
Mr. Sherwin.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson. Mayor Black. Motion carries all members, 39.
All right, last item, Ms. Warner, Helm Street Tank Replacement Project.
In December 2021, the town entered into a grant subrecipient agreement with the Bedford Regional Water Authority to fund certain specified capital projects by use of revenues through the American Rescue Plan Act. Part of that contract stipulates the town shall act to give final approval or disapproval to projects identified in the agreement not later than two months after 60% designs and cost estimates are received from the water authority. One of the projects included in the agreement relates to improvements to a water storage tank on Helm Street. On December 22, 2022, the town received an email from the water authority advising that the cost estimate and 60% design plans have been prepared for this project. That email was forwarded to all members of council on January 13, 2023. Tonight, town council is requested to either approve or disapprove proceeding with the Helm Street, Helm Street Tank Replacement Project identified in the grant subrecipient agreement between the town and the Bedford Regional Water Authority.
We have a motion?
It's a move.
Second.
Any discussion? This is just kind of us moving.
Formality, we're.
Formality, we already made the decision on moving. Okay. All right, roll call.
Mr. Hardwick.
Aye.
Mr. Joe Hansen.
Aye.
Mr. Sherwin.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mayor Black. Motion carries all members, 39.
All right, with that, we're adjourned for the make up of comment.